Good evening and welcome to the North Idaho College Board of Trustees meeting tonight, March 23rd, 2022. If you would, Mark, would you confirm a quorum for me? Do we have Justice McKenzie, Justice McKenzie and President Sabali on? Dr. Sabali? Looks like we have Greg.
Great here. I hear you guys.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, all trustees are present.
Thank you. Dr. Sabali, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine.
All right, thank you. All right, if everyone, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looks like we have some folks signed up for public comment. I got it, Shannon, I walked over and picked it up. All right. First on the list is Erin Bernard.
Hi, I have items to pass out. Can someone pass them out for me, please? Letters, paper. Is there a clerk or something? Or can I pass them out?
Oh, let's see, see if we can get a volunteer.
To the board.
Could someone from the front row maybe assist her? Mr. Lee, would you help her possibly?
Everything should go to the clerk, Todd. And that's just the way it goes.
It's just for the, yeah, the board members. It's just for the board members. Yeah. Each person gets a stack. All right. Sorry, I'm short. I've come before you today to bring you a message from the people. We thought we made the message loud and clear in November 2020 when we elected Todd Banducci, Greg McKenzie, and Michael Barnes to the board. That message was that we were tired of the liberal direction that school was being led and believed the community college, Old Guard, was not acting in the best interests of the community. Since that time, we have seen nothing accomplished except the impressive childish tantrums of the Old Guard of the board affirming the voters' choices to make a change. The continuing narrative that Todd Banducci is bad has brought nothing but a lot of wasted time, speculation, and in Todd's case, defense against the unfounded accusations. And that narrative is all we hear. Because the liberal media will only ever spin conservatives in a negative light, I have taken it upon myself to gather a few signatures of those in the community who support Todd Banducci. These are the people that are overlooked either because they are too busy working and raising families to make it to the board meetings or because they are the quiet ones in the back making informed decisions. Nonetheless, I am here to show you that a few of those who have signed the letter in support of Todd Banducci. These are the taxpayers, voters, and potential future students at North Idaho College. Each of you have received your own copy of the letters. Each one is signed with the name and zip code of a person in support of Mr. Banducci. If you need to get in contact with any person further, please feel free to email me and I will get that person in contact with you. The letter states, Dear NIC Board of Trustees, I am writing this letter to inform you that I support Todd Banducci and his desire to do what's right for North Idaho College. I do not believe that the school has been on the best path for many years and now with Mr. Banducci at the helm, I have hope that he will lead the school to a more conservative, locally focused, community college. I have been ignorant for too long, unaware that our elected officials do not have the local students and communities' best interests at heart. Our community needs North Idaho College to return to a strong, conservative, local community college. The school has been off that trajectory for many, many years and we are fighting to return our college back to its roots. I fully support Chair Todd Banducci and would ask that you do too. Thank you.
Next up on the list is Anne Seddon.
It's time to stop the vendetta by the board, Christie Wood, the Human Rights Group, the Community of Liberals, and the Coeur d'Alene Press. It's a collusion, much like what is happening nationally. These similar groups are tearing down this country to build it back for their own goals. An example of this is Dan Gookin. He managed to get, he managed yet to, again, to get Todd Banducci smeared through his own rude and inappropriate behavior. He disrupted a Republican event by F-bombing the guests at Banducci's table, walked out after being offered a better seat, and then acts like he was abused by Todd. Subsequently, Gookin uses the Coeur d'Alene Press to make false claims of abuse by Todd, which is totally refuted on videos. So again, you can see how Ms. Woods, her friends, the Coeur d'Alene Press collude to destroy a college and a man. John Getty is now part of this team. He's requesting that the state board take over control of our citizens' local college. He wants our effectively legally appointed president to resign. He wants the state to control us. Think about that. He wants the state to control us. It seems that this cabal, and it is a cabal, of power seekers will go to any means to disrupt and destroy the student's school. I asked Christie Wood to end her political war and invasion and do her proper job of making the college a great place to learn.
Next on the list of public speakers is Mr. Ed Kates.
Trustees, members of the community. My name is Ed Kates, I'm a philosophy professor here at NIC. I've been teaching here since 2007. And there's many faculty members on campus who are not, who do not agree with the resolution that you're about to hear from the Faculty Assembly Chair. The Faculty Assembly will, will claim that this is a united effort on campus and there is a, a resolution and the resolution will say things like, every constituent group on campus, including the Faculty Assembly, every constituent group, the NIC faculty renew their commitment to have Todd Banducci resign. Also that the NIC faculty stands with the staff. So in all of this resolution, they're claiming that this is an NIC Faculty Assembly agreement or faculty agreement. 142 faculty members were sent this opportunity to vote. Only 86 people voted on this and 67 voted against Chair Banducci. So basically, you're looking at 47% of the faculty, a minority of the faculty voted for this resolution, but the language is very sloppy, it's not professional. They're saying every faculty member, every constituent, and they're using the faculty as a way to promote the sense that it's a united effort against Chair Todd Banducci. This is sloppy statistics, we shouldn't be teaching our students this. Only 47% of the faculty voted for this. So you need to be aware of that. Secondly, it's deceiving the public. These kinds of resolutions are very deceptive toward the public and it does our community no good to have those kinds of statistics misrepresented in that fashion. And I also speak for several other faculty members on the campus who, who wanted to remain anonymous for obvious reasons. But I wanted to read you one more letter from another faculty member who, who is obviously very much against this and was not represented at all in that vote. And here's the letter. In a high-handed resolution drafted in March 14th, the NIC Faculty Assembly of North Idaho College called for the resignation of Chair Banducci. I hope that the citizens of Cootney County understand that only a minority of full-time faculty at North Idaho College pay attention to anything the NIC Faculty Assembly says or resolves. In fact, of the 142 full-time NIC faculty members, only 67 voted for this resolution. As a full-time faculty member at NIC, I'm ashamed to say that many of the extremely vocal liberal humanities and social science faculty have completely taken over the leadership of the assembly. Notably, no one from STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, or Math, the Business Division, Nursing, or Workforce Training, Welding, Automotive, or Representatives from any other division serve on the Faculty Assembly. Also, very few instructors from these divisions even bother to attend any of the Faculty Assembly meetings. Much of this apathy derives from the fact that the meetings rarely focus on student success and improving teaching methodology. Instead, the meetings typically devolve into discussions over subjects such as the actions of trustees that most faculty believe are no concern to them. Most of us are concerned about quality teaching. We love, I love my job here at NIC, I love my students, but what has happened here is a complete tempest in a teapot, as far as I'm concerned. I also read the accreditation report, which I think is based mostly on hearsay. It's very unprofessional and sloppy. It's not a mature document with any hard evidence. And finally, he concludes, in short, stating that the faculty of NIC agrees that Board Chair Todd Banducci needs to resign grossly overstates the attitude of many faculty members. It certainly does in my case. Thank you.
Mr. William Lee.
Board of Trustees, Chairman Banducci. My name is William. You already said that. So the school is kind of like in, you know, in this upheaval. There's all this drama that's happening. The biggest feature of this is the Accreditation Agency threatening to take away the accreditation for the school. I've already mentioned this, I'm going to rehash it really quickly. But the Accreditation Agency can only, you know, put their spotlight on a school when there is someone that reports or files a complaint against the school. That's the only way it can happen. Who, who was the person that filed that complaint? There was just one organization that did it. There were two complaints. When the first one didn't really garner the response that they wanted, they filed a second one. But there was only one organization that filed this complaint. Would you be surprised if I told you that one of the trustees on this board is the president of that organization? And I don't mean to be, I don't mean to get down and dirty, you know, it's just, it's the facts, right? All the documents are published online. It is a trust, a trustee is the president of that organization that filed the two complaints with the Accreditation Agency. That trustee is Trustee Christie Wood. So, you know, Trustee Christie Wood, we've seen through several meetings for the past two years, has tried to take the high road and behave as though she's altruistically seeking the best interests of the school, saying that the school is in crisis, crisis of leadership, whatever. And even going to the CDA Press and sounding the alarm that the school's going to get in trouble, yet her organization is the one that's sending the complaints to the Accreditation Agency. If that sounds bonkers to you, it's because it is. It's, it's this kind of circus that's happening right now with this school. And I just want you to know that. But let's say if the reports are true, right, it really boils down to two things. The first thing is that...
You know what? I'm going to give him ten, some more seconds because some of you were very rude and if you continue to do that, you'll be asked to leave. His two minutes were not up and you guys were disrupting him and interrupting him.
Just give me 30 seconds, guys. I'm trying to be fair.
I looked at the clock, his two minutes was not up. That was very rude, please, just let people say their piece.
Just give me 30 seconds. Sorry, thanks for indulging me. Wow. If we say there's two, there's like two things that this complaint kind of accumulates to. It's that, you know, the board removed the mask mandates, which the thing is, there were no, there was no state law that was mandating, mandating masks. And according to Idaho statute, the Board Trustees has full authority to do so. And lastly, lastly, it's kind of vague. It's that he's a big meaning and that he's a bully. That's kind of what the complaint amounts to. But we have someone here who works part-time at the school who assaulted someone in public during one of these Board of Trustees meetings. She pushed her and then knocked down her sign. She literally assaulted her. And that person's name is Teresa Lower. She's a part-time biology professor here.
Okay.
Is the Board Trustees going to do anything about that?
I'm jumping in now. We do not attack personal people in public comment.
I'm not attacking that, it's a statement of facts.
I think you need to be done.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Who was that speaking? Okay. All right, next up on the list for public comment is Mr. Russ McLean. You're here to speak about celebrating success?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's important, nice little twist in all this madness. Your cybersecurity, you know, it's great and it's a big field. Nicole does that with the Air Force and she just turned down a 20,000 a year for Microsoft, work from home. Okay. She has top security clearance. And I don't think your graduates have that, I could be wrong. But you have military science here available, which is a modern ROTC. And I don't think you guys are accessing it to where these kids can get their clearance. And I'm kind of wondering that with all the hoopla, you're overseeing the importance of what you need to be doing. You know, and I think that, you know, when, when Ron Nielsen was here, he bull moosed right through and made positive. You know, got the Millerite programs just screaming, the kids are making money hand over fist. And this board's lack, that positive energy, the positive power that you need for these kids. It's getting too much into the weeds with all this horse poop, you know? And I think you need to look into that and fire up your ROTC program and get these kids their top security clearance and get them into some real paying jobs. And that's, that's my part of your celebration. Okay? All right.
Thank you, Russ. Next up is, for public comment is Ms. Linda Putz. Putz.
Hello. The question really is, why are we all here? Why are we here as a public to support the president or to demand that he resign? It really goes back to really what is going on in our culture today. What is our culture? Our culture really is going down to good versus evil, progressive versus conservative, personal responsibility versus social justice, love of America, hate of America, love socialism, hate capitalism, patriots versus snowflakes and Antifa. You know, our three Rs versus CRT and SEL. Right now, the spin on all of this is absolutely deafening. And it's been obvious by what's gone on with Christie Wood filing the complaint and I see coming under accreditation microscope. For what? Because we want our kids to learn the true things about America, the true things in education and not be gender confused, not be told that you can go sit in a corner and have your feelings not hurt? Look at, look at World War II. Where would we be if our 19 and 20-year-olds from World War II acted the way our 19 and 20-year-olds do today? And unfortunately, that started from elementary school all the way up now through college. I see Todd Banducci doing his best to make sure that that does not continue in the college realm. We don't want that up here. I look at some of you sitting out here in masks, you live in fear, constant fear. There's no need for fear. Unfortunately, you're going to find, once Russia, Ukraine is over, we're going to have a new strain and you're going to go back to masks. And the bottom line is, do you really want your children to grow up in a world like that? Is that what made America great? Our education institutions for a long time made our country and our people great and we've lost that focus. And I'm just saying, please, obviously, the college has gone down some roads that it shouldn't go down and we're trying to steer the ship back. And so what are you saying no to by demanding that Banducci resign? You're saying no to true education. You're saying no to not having kids understand there's boys and girls and nothing more. You're saying no to love of country. I mean, if you can't figure out that who a boy and a girl is, you find bones out in a desert and you can through, go through DNA and see if they're male or female. You're saying no to personal responsibility. You're saying yes to socialism and all the craziness that that brings with it. You're saying no to all the things that has made America great. You're saying no to a moral compass. Did I get that picture for you, okay? Little masked woman? So anyway. Well, she's got a mask on and she's taking my picture, so anyway. The bottom line, the bottom line is, the bottom line is, do you want our country to continue on a forward trajectory or continue the way it's been since November of 2020 or since January 20th, when our gas prices are now twice as much as they used to be because we went on a left-wing liberal progressive agenda? And that's what you guys want for this college and that is absolutely pathetic. That belongs in California, Oregon, and Washington, not in Idaho. Thank you.
I would once again, please, ask those in the audience to refrain. This is a business meeting for NIC. Public comment is not required and your presence as the public is not required. If you cannot control your outburst, you will be asked to leave. Just need common courtesy, please. Next on the list to speak is Mr. Howard Coons.
This board is comprised of people who were elected by the community to represent their interests. Three members of this board, the majority, voted to terminate the former president of NIC without cause. This was done in accordance with the terms of his contract, which included a severance payment of one year's salary, around $220,000 plus benefits. When I read about that in the Coeur d'Alene Press, I thought, wow, that's a lot of money to get paid for doing nothing. And that's quite a hit for the NIC taxpayers. I knew nothing about Rick McLennan, but the newspaper reported only praise for him. I figured that if he was such a great administrator and had done such wonderful things at NIC, other colleges would be after him and he would be offered another job quickly. Then it occurred to me that if he got a job in less than a year, he could prorate his severance pay and give the remainder back to the college. That would show what a great person he really was. But Rick McLennan didn't do that. No. He acted like a poor wounded victim, victim, and sued NIC over his wrongful termination. Although he said he cares deeply for North Idaho College, he squeezed everything that he could get out of this community and walked away with half a million dollars. In doing so, he revealed himself to be a self-centered opportunist, a bad character, and I applaud the three trustees responsible for removing him. Thank you, Chairman Banducci, and thank you, Trustee McKenzie. In closing, I agree that it is time for a change in the leadership of North Idaho College. It is clear to me that the trustee who has been on this board the longest, 17 years, would rather destroy this institution than to lose control of it. It would be of great benefit if she would resign.
Next up is Krista Hazel.
Good evening, board members. It's been a long time since I stood at the podium at an NIC meeting. For those of you who may not know, know me, I was the ASNC president and I graduated North Idaho College in 1994. I was elected and I have served on our school board and on the Cootney County Republican Central Committee with Chair Banducci. Politics aside, college direction must change. Two trustees are often unavailable but seem to have time for outside antics that often end up in our headlines. Please step aside if you do not have time. The economy could take a hit of $60 million if this college loses accreditation and we could lose 1,300 jobs. Without accreditation, there's no reason to attend. I'm worried about inaction by this board. It harms the ability for students to have opportunities beyond high school. It hurts employers who need a qualified workforce. Dual-credit students need accreditation to graduate high school. Those kids can't use taxpayer funds that they're entitled to at an unaccredited institution and we wouldn't want them to. The tax bill for scorched earth leadership is now over $5.2 million to this college. We could still lose college accreditation and there are 14-plus different violations that Todd Banducci is named in, either as part of the board or specifically. The community has lost faith. The price tag is too high. For those who believe this is liberal versus conservative, I challenge you to read the accreditation report. The board chair should resign. The community has lost confidence in you, Todd. Honor your oath. Thank you.
And with that, we've reached the 20 minutes that we'd allocated for public comment.
I'm sorry. Todd, I am not aware of...
Right there. That was established and that was put in place days ago. Well, it's irrelevant. Could be anybody on the list.
Todd, quit stopping public comments. We have time to listen to everybody that wants to speak.
Mr. Lyons has suggested that, since we only have four more speakers, that even though we do have some folks on the East Coast, it's just part of the reason we were trying to keep this meeting a little bit shorter since they're three hours later than us, it's 9:30 there already, that we would allow the last four. Remember that these folks will have to get up early tomorrow and attend their conference, so. The next on the list is Mr. Joe Dunlap.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Joe Dunlap, former president at North Idaho College as well as former board chair. If you haven't read the 27-page accreditation report, I would suggest you do so. It is a scathing report recommending probation primarily for board dysfunction and in particular, its leadership. With the resignation of Mr. Barnes, the board... With the resignation of Mr. Barnes, the board is now completely deadlocked. If placed on probation, there will be a very tight timeline to rectify non-compliance issues or face total loss of accreditation. Loss of accreditation means student credits will not transfer. Students will not qualify for financial aid. College credits earned in high school will be worthless, and students will no longer be able to progress from kindergarten to a PhD here in Coeur d'Alene. Student success and educational excellence are the cornerstones of the NIC mission. So who's looking out for the well-being of the students and correcting accreditation non-compliance deficiencies? Well, it's the faculty and staff. And I'd like to thank the faculty and staff for all you do for our students and our community. However, there is one accreditation area that they cannot influence or provide a remedy: board dysfunction. So what's the solution? In the absence of the board finding a fair-minded fifth trustee on the 6th of April, the only solution is a change in board leadership, which will eventually manifest itself through resignations or elections. However, there is not enough time to wait for this one to come to fruition because of accreditation or for the sake of our students. I would urge the board to find a compromise and agree on a fifth trustee or tender a resignation. Time is of the essence for the sake of our students. Faculty and staff, thank you.
Next up is Ms. Sherri Williams.
My name's Sherri Williams. I'm a former student, employee, wife of a 47-year gentleman who gave 47 years of his life to this college as a coach, an administrator, and a trustee. NIC has always had great leadership. That's what I'm speaking to, leadership. Has always had great leadership in the form of the board. I know this because I've been here 44 years, not two minutes. Christie Wood is honorable. Ken Howard is honorable. And they do the right thing for the college. They didn't come in with preconceived notions. They didn't come in to burn down NIC. They didn't come in to make it a little local parochial college because it never has been. It's been an institution of free-thinking, leadership, and knowledge. And if you don't want your kids to learn about that, don't send them here. The definition of leadership is the activity of leading a group of people or an organization, or the ability to do this and sharing that vision with others so they will follow willingly. Coordinating and balancing the conflicting interests of all members and stakeholders. My husband, Rowley Williams, defined leadership by some things that he still lives by and the standards that he coached by. These are: do the right thing. Do the best you can do. Treat others the way you would like them to be treated. I submit along with these 1,000 index cards that people of the community have written asking Mr. Banducci and Mr. McKenzie to resign, that this chairman has not followed any of those principles or even tried. Neither has his minion, McKenzie. Your fight has been lost. And if you have any honor in any of your being, you will resign immediately for the good of the college and the students. Thank you.
Well, that was very polite. Is that an assault? Wow, did she throw those at me? You are an extremely pleasant lady. Next on the list is Ms. Laura Tennyson.
Hello, my name is Laura Tennyson, and I'm a Coeur d'Alene resident. A previous speaker mentioned that the continuous negative comments and attention regarding Todd Banducci have only wasted time. Let's talk about what's actually been wasted, which is $5.2 million that the college has lost as a direct result of Todd Banducci, the college's reputation, confidence of the faculty, staff, and community in board leadership, and countless hours and wasted money from a months-long investigation triggered by Todd Banducci. I could go on. NIC will lose its accreditation if we continue with the same. Without accreditation, enrollment at NIC will plummet, causing a tidal wave of consequences on our community, including over 1,000 lost jobs at the college, lost tourism, lost opportunities of businesses coming to our community, and lost revenue for our businesses, which then leads to lost jobs in our community, to name a few. The Accreditation Board conducted a months-long investigation, as I previously mentioned, putting in countless hours to investigate whether NIC is in compliance, and if not, what has caused the non-compliance. At the end of their investigation, they issued a detailed report. The report made it very clear that there is one and only one thing, or rather, person that has put the accreditation of NIC at risk, and that is the chairman, Todd Banducci. His behavior has been so egregious that multiple Human Rights Task Forces and the Coeur d'Alene Tribe have filed complaints with the Accreditation Board, not just the Cootney County Task Force on Human Relations, as was previously stated by a speaker. I attended NIC right out of high school and again recently. I served on ASNC as a senator and regularly made the president's list. I graduated with honors in 2018. I was also awarded Alumni Woman of the Year by NIC in 2020. I am very proud of NIC, and I am appalled at what is happening as a direct result of Todd Banducci. I am here as NIC.
How much longer do you have?
I have one sentence.
Okay.
I am here as NIC alumna and as a Coeur d'Alene resident to demand that Todd Banducci resign immediately. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Larry Briggs.
An exceptionally well-qualified team appointed by the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities recommended that NIC be placed on probation. Even in light of the college's response to NWCCU, it is almost certain that NIC will soon, in fact, be on probation. NIC's fall from good standing in less than two years' time is astonishing. The cost to the college's reputation, to faculty and staff morale, to students' trust in the future of the college mount by the day. Simply put, every program at NIC is damaged by the current situation: instructional, CTE, healthcare, athletic, workforce, and grant-based programs. The loss of accreditation publicly acknowledged as possible by NIC would be catastrophic for the entire region. These extraordinary times call for extraordinary action. First, restore a measure of confidence in the integrity of board governance by the resignation of the current BOT chair. Second, demonstrate unwavering commitment to the educational mission of the college by every board member's professional conduct in all their interactions with scrupulous adherence to NIC policy and procedure. More work by the college flows from these two initial steps as accreditation is based on an established pattern of compliance with standards and eligibility requirements. But without either action, NIC's ability to repair the accreditation status of the college is compromised. Change is urgently needed to safeguard the benefits that accrue to everyone that NIC serves. I respectfully offer this perspective as someone with over 20 years of experience on accreditation, including eight years as a dean at NIC and as an NWCCU site visitor to a wide array of colleges and universities across the region. Thank you.
All right, we are now on to celebrating success. Title of that is "North Idaho College Making a Difference in Cybersecurity and Computer Information Technology", earlier referenced by Mr. McLean. We have Cassie Silva, who'll be leading us on that. Dr. Silva?
Thank you, such a big crowd. Good evening, everybody. I was looking for my faculty member that's going to give this great presentation. I'm very proud to introduce Bob Quant, and I believe Kathleen Zerta Page will be with us digitally via Zoom. Several years ago, we started the quest for bringing cybersecurity to North Idaho College, and these two faculty members have worked super hard to make this opportunity available for our students and to be the front leaders in the state of Idaho with all the acclimates and the awards and recognitions that we have done. So, Mr. Quant, are you ready to come up and talk a little bit? Thank you.
Cassie, are you going to have a number of slides up here?
Do you want them up there?
Well, no, that's not my question. That's the only place people can see them, would be up there, correct?
Gotcha.
Okay.
I think he's got a clicker here.
Well, yeah, and I'm thinking of maybe moving out of the line of fire.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, technology, it runs us off. She probably is. Won't need her unless you guys stump the chump and I can't answer a question. Thank you. My name's Bob Quant. Thank you, Chair Banducci, Trustees Wood, Trustee Howard, Trustee McKenzie. I know you're online, President Sabali, Dr. Lyons, Provost Silva. Thanks for having us. Again, my name is Bob Quant. I'm one of the three professors in the site program. The other two professors are Randy Graves and Kathleen Zerta Page. We are led by Chair Struble and Dean Miles. As I don't, the slide's not real bright, but those of us in technology and in government, we work with a lot of acronyms. We have two here to deal with in our program, SITE and NSA. SITE is an acronym for Computer Information Technology, and NSA is an acronym for our program that's called Network Security Administration. That's our cybersecurity program here at NIC. Both of these associates of Applied Science degree programs are housed within the Business and Professional Programs Division. The NSA, the National Security Agency, is a federal agency and is our CAE sponsor. There's nothing to read up here, just pictures. Trying to make it easy on you. The SITE Department started in 1999. The three of us have 72 years of combined experience in information technology, including holding several industry certifications. It's required by the state, and you know, we need to do it so we can walk the walk. And all of us hold a master's degrees, at least one of them, at least one. The SITE Department offers two associates of Applied Science degrees, as I mentioned, the SITE AAS and the NSA AAS. We also have certificates in those programs. North Idaho College, oh, wait, my, sorry. We have articulation agreements with Boise State, LCSC, Highline College, and Watkin College for our programs. The SITE Degree Program also has a dual-credit offering. By the way, that's a picture of one of our classrooms, a couple of our classrooms and some of our technology. This is a certificate of academic excellence that we received from, not we, the college received from the NSA and Department of Homeland Security. This is college-wide. This is not just the SITE program. There was a lot of work that was done on this, and that's what Ms. Silva was talking about. So North Idaho College received the Certificate of Academic Excellence in the 1819 school year, which was the first year of the NSA program, and that's why I'm standing here. Luckily, I was hired to help run that program. This is a college-wide certification, as I said, and it's based on program competencies and other college metrics. The CAE certificate is nationally recognized, sponsored again by the NSA and Homeland Security. North Idaho College was the first two-year school in the state to get this, the first. That's a huge accomplishment. There is a ton of work that goes into getting this. The CAE designation allowed us to get NSC's name out nationally for cybersecurity education and open opportunities for grants. We are now in the fourth year of this, and we are going through the process of renewing it. With COVID, everything, as we know, it's got pushed back, especially with the federal agencies. But we're on task, and Ms. Zerta Page is working on that, all of us are. So that's a great pat on the back to all of you, not just us in SITE. Grants and funding. Oh, IT, there's a couple of things to read here. With our CAE certification, we did apply for two grants last year, and the grant names are Cybersecurity High School Initiative III and IV. Both grants are two years in length with a third possible year for the, we call it CHI, another acronym, Cybersecurity High School Initiative. I'm working on the CHI III grant. Professor Page is working on, Zerta Page is working on the CHI IV. The goal of the two grants is to help local high schools in our area, well, actually, in the whole Northwest. And myself, Professor Zerta Page, and Dr., sorry, Mike, he's down in Southern Idaho at U of I. We're the only three people in the state of Idaho working on this. So my part of it is to develop, to get the colleges, or excuse me, get the high schools to put a course in their school, and Professor Zerta Page is working on the curriculum for those teachers to use. We have two schools signed up right now: Falls High School and Cootney Technical Education Campus, and that's ongoing. And we start the training for those guys here this summer. This, this is a result, this is our Cardinal Security Operations Center, or SOC. I'm the one that deemed it Cardinal. We are Cardinals, so that's ours. Funding was made available for two NIC from the Idaho State Board of Education to tackle several of the objectives from the President's Leadership Council, one of which was to establish a cyber range between each of the eight public colleges and universities in Idaho. The Idaho State Board of Education, recognizing the need to update cybersecurity skills in our state, provided $49,000 to NIC to be one of the eight participants in the cyber range throughout the state. With this funding, we built the Security Operations Center to interconnect with the other seven public colleges in. With this funding, we built the Security Operations Center to interconnect with the other seven public colleges in Idaho, which the, the eight of us formed the cyber range. We employed three, we employed three site students this last summer to help me build out the Cardinal Security Operations Center. The Cardinal Security Operations Center is now physically built out and connected to the other seven colleges. We met that goal. We got connected to a couple of them last May and we're, we're ongoing and finishing that as we speak. Currently, we're routing our governance documents around to the administration for approval. As soon as that's done, then we'll start the work between the colleges, training each other, doing cyber competitions with each other, helping the community is my, is my goal for our, our SOC. And that's, that's upcoming. We're going through the process right now. Graduates in our community, what have we done? Our NSA program was, again, was started in the 1819 school year and we had six graduates with their Associate of Applied Science and NSA degrees after the 1920 school year. It's a two-year program. We started, two years later, we graduated our first six. Our students participate in both local and national cybersecurity competitions annually in our NSA program. The site NSA degree and certificate programs have graduated over 119 students since the 1718 school year. Research showed us 51% of the information technology support jobs require an Associate of Applied Science or an Associate's degree in science, and 11% of those cybersecurity jobs require a two-year Associate of Applied Science and/or an AS degree. We're seeing that requirement come down. A lot of job descriptions are saying bachelor's degree. That's not the case. I got into doing, I was the IT manager of the health district. I didn't have a degree. I had a lot of experience and that's what got me hired. And then I went on and educated. I'm standing in front of you guys because I got a couple of master's degrees. One's in education. So, we do really well in our community. Our community is a huge support for us. Our paid interns this, this year, we always have an internship program. It's the spring of every year. They started out at $20 an hour as an intern locally here in Coeur d'Alene. Several of our graduates and these three folks up on, up on the front there, these are the three students that helped me build the SOC. The two gentlemen on the left, the guy on the left works for Hagenon Corporation, the guy on the right works for Missoula School District. I want you to take notice of that gentleman on the right. He is, they're both sitting on the floor, but that man is a wheelchair-bound individual. He had no gumption at all jumping out of that wheelchair and getting on the ground. He was born with this, this disability. Does not stop him from doing his job. The young lady on the right, she's working over at Kootenay Health. Several of our students are working right now and several recent graduates, they're getting paid between $21 and $25 an hour here locally in town. Not, not in Washington, not in Oregon, not in San Francisco. Here. The site program has an exceptional reputation in the business community and several job listings explicitly stated site program graduate. Professor Zerda Page and Professor Graves have been over here, here over 20 years. They set a high standard for the site program and it, and it's continued. And it's reflected by that C in our name in the job listing in the paper. The information technology field needs people. The wages are good and they're a pass for ascension. IT is a fast, professional, personal growth industry. If you demonstrate initiative, you are going to get promoted. I want to thank all of you for listening to my little presentation. Questions? Anybody? That's why I left you the piece of paper. So, if you want to write something.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I would like to thank Bob for being here tonight and presenting. While I appreciate everything we've heard tonight, what cybersecurity is doing for our students right now is, is a fine example of what keeps us all going because of the great work that is happening here. 25% of the jobs across the state in this field are in our area right now. And this is still an important issue for the governor and the presidents across the state and they talked about it today in a meeting. But I just wanted to thank him for bringing back Celebrating Success tonight and sharing the wonderful things that they're doing with their program and, and the impact that it has on our community and for our students.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Silva. I want to see if any of the trustees had questions, Bob.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Ken?
Thank you. Bob, I want to say thank you. Thank you on several different levels, actually. One thing about the Celebrating Success component of our meetings is that as trustees, we get acquainted sometimes with things that we might never know existed here on campus. And to hear your program and the success of that program, not just by you, but all of your colleagues who have put this together and helped made the program viable, I want to thank all of you. Because this program is being televised to the community. The community gets a chance to see how NIC, through the efforts of folks like you and your colleagues, are not just going along with the, the same old programs that maybe have been in education for a long time, but we're, we're breaking new frontiers. We're seeking new levels of education in order to meet the needs of our, our students. And, and your presentation here helps us understand how NIC is doing that. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I wish I could have got more into the technology since it evolves, but we do stay up on that. And that's what makes our students marketable.
I have a quick question, not to elongate this because again, it's a late night for the gentleman on the East Coast, but since Mr. McLean brought this up, and I formerly had a top-secret SCI clearance and did some, some different work around the world. Do we have security clearances that are granted to this program or with, through the NSA or is there any?
No, no, I, I had the same. TS SCI, you have to have a job before you're going to get a security clearance. There's nothing we can do here to get them ready. What we can do here is get them graduated, keep them out of trouble. So, when they get the job and they apply for a security clearance, they get it. That's, that's the big deal. I wish we could. I, fortunately, one of our students is graduating here. That's what he does. He performs background checks on contractors that need security clearance. It's taken 12 to 18 months to get one right now because of COVID. And when I was in active duty and probably when, when you got yours, it took us about 10 to 12 months to get ours. They're not, it's not easy. You just can't apply for it and get one.
Yes, sir. All right, anything else, anybody? Bob, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, next on the list, we go to the constituent reports. The first one on the list is ASNC. Cyrus, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try and keep it relatively short because it is getting a little bit late. But we have achieved a whole lot recently as ASNC. One of our most exciting things that we did was we, after working with the SWR committee, we got them to have extended hours. So, now Monday through Wednesday, they're open 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM completely, no like lunch break or anything like that. Thursday, Friday at 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM, and now we have a Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So, very exciting.
Excellent.
Thank you. We also had a leadership retreat where we learned about how to use our various different leadership voices to the best of our abilities. We also went to a five-day leadership conference in Chicago, the ACUI ILEAD Conference. It was an absolute blast. I'd like to thank the college for sponsoring that for us to go. It was just, it was five days of keynote speakers and various different workshops and just meeting people from all across the country who all want to be leaders like us. And it's just, it's, it was a very, very, very cool experience. We are also remodeling our office. And so, ASNC will be relocating kind of throughout the sub. So, like, we'll be, like, the executive team will be downstairs and then like some other various centers will be like located in like the Get Involved booth and, and throughout. So, if anybody ever comes looking for us and all of that's being like torn down, you're not going to find us up there. Tonight, we had an ice skating night, which I'm sure was a lot of fun. And then we're doing a Cardinal Cruise next month, which should be a blast. And we have a day of service coming up too, where we're going to help out various different community organizations such as the Ronald McDonald House, Safe Passage CDA, HREI, and a bunch of other on-campus things like gardening and helping to clean up the beach. And we are also currently working on a list of academic best practices, which we will be presenting hopefully within the coming month. So, that's all I got. Are there any questions or comments?
Cyrus, you've been busy.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Questions or comments from the board? Sorry, you missed the ice skating?
It's okay.
And curious, how many of you were able to go off to Chicago for the conference?
There was three of us.
Okay.
Yes.
Was that by your positions or just who was able to go with school and such?
Just who was able to go with school and such. A lot of our kids are in like programs, like the nursing program. So, it's already difficult enough for them to do things like student government. So, then to go out and be like, yeah, I'll take five days off of school. Yeah, it was just, it's a little, little tougher for other individuals. But I was lucky enough to be able to find time and go. And so, it was a lot of fun.
Understand.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Faculty Assembly. Molly Mashad.
Thank you, Chair Banducci, trustees, community members. Nice team colleague, Kate's still here. I did math. You've had a preview of what I'm reporting tonight, but I did also want to add that we did have in our March meeting, the first reading of bylaws, changes proposed by the Subcommittee on Meetings. We're updating how we conduct meetings now with, in the age of Zoom. And I also wanted to give special commendation to Erin Davis for writing, the Writing Center. We are 100% open and serving coffee and tea again. So, any students from NIC, U of I, or LCSC, Coeur d'Alene are welcome to come and get help with papers. We have 129 voting members in Faculty Assembly. Eighty-six of those members voted. That represents 67% of our body. Seventy-eight percent voted aye. Seventeen percent, 15 people voted nay. Five percent for body, for people abstained on the following resolution, which did pass with a vast majority. Whereas, actions of a new North Idaho College Board of Trustees' majority have caused significant disruption since NIC's accreditation was reaffirmed by Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities' action in 2020. Whereas, on February 2nd, 2021, the North Idaho College Faculty Assembly adopted a resolution which included a vote of no confidence in the current board chair's ability to serve in the college's best interest and called for Chair Banducci to step down as the Chair of NIC Board of Trustees. Whereas, on March 17th, 2021, NWCCU received a complaint against NIC that NIC was in non-compliance with accreditation eligibility requirements. Whereas, on November 1st, 2021, NWCCU received a complaint that NIC was in violation of eligibility requirements and standards for accreditation. Whereas, NWCCU opened an investigation into NIC's alleged violations. Whereas, NWCCU issued a peer evaluation panel report on February 28th, 2022 in response to the complaints made against NIC and submitted to the NWCCU. Whereas, panel report summarized concerns and found that NIC is out of compliance with numerous accreditation standards due to the Board of Trustees' actions. Whereas, the NWCCU panel has recommended that the Commission place North Idaho College on probation regarding its accreditation. Whereas, the panel report recognizes that the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College is dysfunctional. Whereas, the panel report recognizes that the staff and faculty leadership bodies have remained stalwart in their commitment to academic freedom and the integrity of the institution. Whereas, the panel report commends the faculty, staff, and administrators of North Idaho College for their deep commitment to student success and to upholding the important mission of the college despite great disruption caused by the Board of Trustees. The staff and faculty leadership bodies have remained stalwart in their commitment to academic freedom and the integrity of the institution. Whereas, the panel report raises concerns, concerns related to the board decisions and management of the college. Whereas, the panel report expresses, quote, "misgivings about the process used to select interim President Sabali have reduced his ability to effectively lead the institution," end quote. Whereas, the panel report recognizes that, quote, "the board chair's political statements and role in questioning curricular content has had a chilling effect on faculty independence and diverse thought," end quote. Whereas, the panel report recognizes, quote, "the actions of the Board of Trustees and the board chair's disregard for North Idaho College policies," end quote. Whereas, the panel report states, quote, "recent actions by the Board of Trustees and disruptions in NIC governance have resulted in departure of critical leadership, a moody's change of prospects from stable to negative, losses of donors, and uncertainty regarding future fundraising successes. This impacts the financial stability of the institution," end quote. Whereas, quote, "the panel observed a widespread perception that issues of current and future instability lie with the disruptive, disruptive actions taken by the NIC Board of Trustees, which threaten the viability of an important community educational institution," end quote. Whereas, the word trustee carries a connotation of a person being trusted. Every constituent group on campus, staff assembly, faculty assembly, deans, vice presidents, president, current boards of trustee members have gone on record stating that they do not trust the current board chair. Therefore, be it resolved that the faculty of NIC have worked diligently to provide high-quality education to the students at North Idaho College. We are doing our part to maintain accreditation. Be it further resolved that probationary status will have substantial adverse effects on NIC's standing in the community, on enrollment, and on programs that have unique accreditation that depends on NIC's accreditation status. Be it further resolved that the faculty implore the board, do its part by fully implementing the recommendations of the panel report as quickly as possible to demonstrate its commitment to maintaining accreditation and quality education at North Idaho College. Be it further resolved that the faculty of NIC renew our February 2nd, 2021 vote of no confidence in the board chair's ability to serve the college's best interests. Be it further resolved that the faculty of NIC agrees with the staff of NIC and agrees with the current Board of Trustee member, Kristi Wood, to call upon the current board chair to step down from his position as chair immediately. This was adopted by vote of the Faculty Assembly, 22nd of March, 2022, written by a math faculty member as well as a committee of several faculty across every division on this campus. I stand for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Kristi?
Well, Molly, it would, it, we absolutely have to acknowledge and, and comment on what you've said. You know, I have to tell you, I, I was prepared under a agenda item to make a motion and ask Trustee Banducci to step aside his chair. I'm listening to you, listening to our community that there's really so much distress because we're not working together. I'm not going to make that motion tonight. Todd's got to come to that conclusion on his own. But I, I really want you to know that it is hard to hear from a faculty group how stressed you are because of our leadership. And so, I apologize for that. If I had to roll in that, I apologize for that. I, you do tremendous work here, all of you do. And I'm sorry that you're going through this. So, thank you for your statements.
Thank you, Trustee Wood.
Molly, I took this job some years ago, not really knowing what NIC was all about. And I have learned to not just learn about and know NIC, but to love NIC and to be part of a trustee board that is not serving its purpose breaks my heart. I have searched and searched for ways to try and resolve this problem, and I will continue to do so. Because as you outlined so eloquently, the problem is not with the faculty and staff, students, and the population of NIC, it's with the leadership, it's with this board. And we have let down everybody with regard to what's expected of us. And so I appreciate your having the courage to bring forward the resolution and let the public know how the faculty and staff feel about this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Howard.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Staff Assembly, Sarah Martin.
Good evening Chair Banducci, Trustees Howard McKenzie, Howard McKenzie in this, in this woods, Mr. Lyons, Dr. Sabali, and of course, our honored guest here tonight. And thank you for, for being here. My report tonight will be share, will be sharing of the Staff Assembly Resolution that was passed earlier today. I do need to recognize before I share that resolution and give thanks to the staff who worked on drafting the resolution and the approximately 40 staff members who came together over two separate meetings to read and review that draft resolution. It was amazing to see that even though we have a diverse, diverse thoughts and perspectives, we are still able to come together and work together. We even had individuals who initially voted on our initial survey to see if there was an interest in pursuing a resolution. Members who voted against it still joined the meeting to review the draft resolution and come together and help create it. And so I will share that with you right now. The Staff Assembly of North Idaho College presents NIC Board of Trustees with the following resolution in response to Northwest Commission and Colleges and Universities External Peer Evaluation Draft Panel Report, which was received February 28th of 2022. We, the staff of NIC, work alongside faculty to provide the highest quality support in educational programming and services to meet the needs of North Idaho College students. The draft panel report share that the staff and faculty have been commended by the NWCCU for our devotion to the college and community and doing our part every day to maintain the college's accreditation. This has been reaffirmed, as I mentioned before, in every major review cycle from 1950 to 2020. Whereas the actions of the North Idaho College Board of Trustees' majority have caused significant disruption since NIC's accreditation was reaffirmed by the NWCCU on July 22nd of 2020. Whereas the board chose not to fulfill the NWCCU's recommendation to focus on eligibility, eligibility requirement number nine, governing board, as stated in the July 19th, 2021 letter. Whereas multiple resolutions have been adopted by the staff and faculty assemblies and the following resolutions were passed. February 2nd of 2021, faculty adopted a resolution of no confidence in Chair Banducci and asked him to step down. February 23rd of 2021, staff released a statement on the Board of Trustees' ethic and behavior and concurred with faculty in the request for the chair to step down. October 26th of 2021, faculty voted no confidence in the board again. December 13th of 2021, staff passed a vote of no confidence in the Board of Trustees in response to not fulfilling commitments made to the NWCCU on May 28th of 2021. Whereas on November 1st of 2021, the NWCCU received a second complaint that NIC was in violation of eligibility requirements and standards of accreditation. The second complaint resulted in a virtual evaluation held January 18th, 2020, 2022. Whereas the panel draft report found, found out, found NIC out of compliance with numerous accreditation standards due to the Board of Trustees' actions and recommended the Commission place NIC on probation. Whereas potential probationary status will have substantial adverse effects on NIC's enrollment on programs that have unique accreditation that depend on NIC's accreditation status and standing in the community. Whereas the draft panel report notes actions to date by the Board of Trustees negatively impact the future financial stability of this institution. Whereas the draft panel report refers to misgivings about the process and use and use to select interim president, which have reduced his ability to effectively lead this institution. Whereas the draft panel report recognizes, quote, "the board's chairs' political statements and roles in questioning curricular content has had a chilling effect on faculty independence and diverse thought." Whereas draft panel report recognizes, quote, "the actions of the Board of Trustees and board chairs' disregard for North Idaho College's policies." Whereas the draft panel report emphasizes, quote, "the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College is dysfunctional," end quote, and raises concerns related to board decisions and oversight of the college. Whereas the word trustee carries a connotation of a person being trusted. Be it resolved that the staff call the board to set aside differences and do its part by fully implementing the comprehensive recommendations of the draft panel report immediately to demonstrate its commitment to maintaining accreditation and quality education at NIC. Be it further resolved that the staff call immediately for the board chair, Todd Banducci, to resign from the North Idaho College Board of Trustees for the good of the institution, its students, and the community. Be it further resolved that the staff reaffirm its commitment to our students, to our faculty and administration and the greater community, and will continue to do the good work that we receive accolades for from the NWCCU. This was adopted by vote of the Staff Assembly on March 23rd of 2022, so as of today. And that is my report. I stand for questions.
Mr. Chair. A comment. Again, Sarah, I, I think we can't just not comment on such a powerful statement. It's true, the board is dysfunctional. Trustee Howard's already alluded to that. It's obvious to anyone who watches us. We are now in a two-to-two. We don't communicate. We don't work well together. It's not a liberal versus conservative issue. It's a, it's a really about policy, law, and standard. So, I take your statement very seriously. I, I'm going to do my part to work with my board and appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Wood.
Trust the art.
Sarah, let. Let me just reinforce the comments I made to Molly. Uh, oh, it is, it breaks my heart to be in this position, but we have to move forward. I, I'm disappointed. And not just that the faculty and staff have to come forward and tell us we're wrong and we're not doing our jobs. But quite frankly, we got the interim report from the NWCAA and they've told us what to do, and we have not had one meeting, not one meeting to address the allegations set forth in that, in that paper. No effort to try and correct the deficiencies that they noted. It is shameful. And we have to do something. And I'm going to do my best to help facilitate that. But it takes all of us and it takes an effort and, and a desire to address the, the complaints and the issues that have been raised. And I thank you and I thank all of your colleagues for bringing forth, again, the resolution of the faculty and staff that forces the board to do its job. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Howard.
No, I guess it comes to me for a moment. Grandstanding notwithstanding, there was a particular schedule and process for this and rules of how and when things were to be dealt with and released and responded to and made public. And from my understanding, we have adhered to that. Dr. Savali, Dr. Curse, Dr. Kurtz, excuse me. And the rest of the accreditation team has done exactly what they were supposed to be doing and have followed the rules. And so if there was an allegation there, I hope, I hope there wasn't. That would sound like there was, being said that somebody wasn't doing their job or wasn't doing what they were supposed to do. My understanding is we've done exactly what we're supposed to do, exactly how we were supposed to do it, and exactly when we were supposed to do it. So just because you don't like the process doesn't mean that somebody's wrong or doing something sneaky. So I think people need to take a breath and let the process play itself out and everything will, will come to fruition in its due time. And then see NWCCU is how it's, how it is, what it actually is. Will, will drive that and, and as we are waiting for their next communication, then we will respond correct, correctly and appropriately.
Mr. Chair.
Chair, if I may.
Uh, I'd like to see if the president has anything to add to that first. But Dr. Savali.
Um, I.
If I may go and maybe Dr. Savali can.
Go ahead.
Trustee, trustee McKenzie, go ahead.
I understand this process is still considered a confidential process that us trustees are not necessarily supposed to run our mouths in the press quite yet until the final thing has been voted on. So I would love to say lots, but I'm trying to respect the policies of NWCCU and do as best for this institution. And I do appreciate the president's message that came out that was very clear on our accreditation status, that we are a still very well-accredited institution. And I forget the wording. I'm happy to read it if people would like. I think it would benefit this entire community and the members of this board to even read that whole president's message. I thought it was very well done. And yeah, over.
Trustee McKenzie, if you'd like to read it, go ahead, or otherwise I do have it in front of me. I believe it was put out to the college community yesterday. Is that correct? It was yesterday?
Yeah, give me, give me a second. I have my email right here. I'd love to.
Yeah, it'd probably be good to share with the community since we seem, we have a lot of concern on this topic. And there's the potential for a lot of missing disinformation or just lack of information. So this is the most recent communication that's been made campus-wide from the leadership of the campus.
Okay, this was sent Tuesday. That would be yesterday, March 22nd, 2022. And said, "Good afternoon. In my accreditation update to you last week, I shared that while I appreciated the NWCCU Executive Committee being thorough and thoughtful in their next steps, I was hopeful we would soon hear a decision through a letter of action. We have since learned that it may take longer than 10 days to receive a letter of action or additional communications regarding the Commission's next steps. With the support of President's Cabinet, I have chosen to share the college's response to the peer panel report. Throughout this entire accreditation review, it has been clear to everyone that NIC faculty and staff are fulfilling the institutional mission of this college and continue to deliver high-quality instruction and services to our students. NIC is an accredited institution. We will be the same quality accredited institution moving forward. Throughout our college's response to the peer review panel report, we continue to affirm that the quality of the educational experience for our students remains unchanged. Even if the college were to receive a sanction by the NWCCU, NIC would retain its accreditation during the entire sanction process. And the college would be given time to correct any deficiencies to clear the sanction. Credits and degrees earned today and tomorrow will remain valuable and transferable. All the credits on an NIC, on a student's NIC transcript are from an accredited college and will remain so, no matter the outcome of the current NWCCU review. Each employee of NIC is an ambassador for our college. I encourage you when speaking with our dual-credit, traditional and non-traditional students to share about what makes NIC exceptional and support them to continue to choose NIC to achieve their academic goals. Let's share the value of NIC and remind students why they choose NIC. I want to thank all of you for your outstanding contributions to this college during these trying times. I am proud of NIC and what this college means to our community. And most important, I'm proud of your dedication to our students. Sincerely, Michael Savali, interim president.
Yeah, and I'm going to make a comment first before I call on you, sir. How sad is it that two-thirds of you sit there stone-faced and don't want to applaud the positive thing about our college? Is it really to that point that you even jeopardize your jobs and your careers to tear down this college to make a point to?
Their jobs are not jeopardized.
Well, it sounds like it. They seem to think so, the accreditation. I'm just asking, I mean, we don't want to clap for anything positive for NIC. It's sort of like the paper doesn't want to put anything positive about NIC. I, I just asked the question. I mean, there we go. Okay.
Chair Banducci.
Maybe you need to rethink.
Chair Banducci.
Trustee, trustee Howard.
I guess I want to make a couple of comments. I need to respond to your comments about being sneaky. And I'm not, I'm not complaining about anything that the faculty and staff and the members of this administration have done. They've done yeoman work in terms of keeping us on track. I was referring specifically to the trustees. And the trustees have done nothing, have done nothing with regard to having one meeting in order to address the allegations and the concerns set out in, in the reports. So my comments are directed specifically at this panel. And with regard to that, specifically, I'll say that when Dr. Savali was making his response to the last report, I requested of him, and I think trustee Wood requested of him that we, as trustees, have an opportunity to participate.
I object. If we want to go into executive session, we may about a president's review.
This, um, this is not a president's review. I'm talking about the response, and we were not allowed to be involved in that. And we were told, we were told, as you have indicated.
Chair, I object. If you want to go into executive session about a president's performance, I think that's inappropriate.
I'm not talking about the president's performance. I'm talking specifically about a report and us not being able to participate in that report.
Well, Ken, none of the trustees participated.
I know we should have.
No, we should not.
Yes, we should have.
Ken, you didn't think the last accreditation response, when the whole board requested, there was general consensus in a board meeting to get the accreditation response, and it was still not.
Are you going to control this meeting, Mr. Chair?
You know, I will, but actually what he just said was correct. So I'll make the same response. There was an agreement. Until we got the letter of action, we had talked about having a meeting and we, we said, no, we won't. And we talked about it again. We said, no, we'll wait. No, we'll, we'll push back. And then we said, okay, we'll wait till we get a letter of action. So we actually have something that we can look at. We'll have specifics and then we'll have a meeting and then we can see what actions are appropriate. So for, for you to suggest that we've not done anything is disingenuous. We were not prepared to do anything yet until we have something to act upon.
Well, we do have something to act upon, and if you said that there was a meeting that we agreed upon, what you just said, it was without me.
No, we never had one. We kept saying we'd wait. We said.
We never said that. Never addressed it. Never addressed it. You're making things up.
Oh, sure I am. You bet. Thank you, Ken.
Can we finish up with this constituent reports and move on?
Sarah had a comment.
Um, well, it might be past the point. I, I just, thank you, trustee Woods and Chair Banducci. I just, just want to make a comment that, you know, the, with everything going on and when staff, faculty, students, community, whoever might stand up, it's not rocking the boat. It's not rocking the boat that's going to capsize. This institution. There are holes that are being drilled in on the base, the foundation, we have lost former president, we have lost. Administration that had held this institution together for so many years. And those holes, as much as we can put tape on to them. The water pressure is going to build and it's gonna, the water is still going to come in and it's going to sink the ship. So by us standing up, it gives us an opportunity to stand up, not just for constituency groups, but even individually, it is not easy. To be up here delivering these resolutions. It's terrifying, it's intimidating, there is a sense of fear of intimidation that staff feel. And faculty and it's not okay. It is not okay, so we are standing here saying this. We have, we have shared this multiple times and it's like, how many times do we have to say? Please just stop, just listen, listen to our concerns. That's all we were asking and slow down and listen to us. Instead, we are railroading and speeding through, making decisions that are literally tearing apart this institution. And that's where I'm going to end my, my statement, I, I'm not going to stand for any more questions, I do need to acknowledge this beautiful girl over here who should not have. Received the action and the comments to her, I applaud you, you are beautiful, you are special and don't take that personally, okay? Thank you.
Chair Banducci, if I may.
All right, next up is Mr. Jeff Carr.
Chair Banducci. I guess. After him, maybe.
Yeah, just a moment, trustee McKenzie. Thank you, Chair Banducci, fellow trustees, assembled guests. We had a rather light meeting at the, for our March meeting in Senate, we had a first reading of policy and procedure five point zero nine. On communicable diseases, I'd like to thank Alex Harris for dropping by and answering questions and we look forward to a spirited second reading at our next meeting. That will conclude my report, are there any questions?
Very well done, sir, thank you. I like the use of the word spirited. Seems to be a lot of that. Next on the agenda is the president's report.
Thank you, everybody, this evening for being here, Chair Banducci, trustees, NIC community. Accreditation has been at the forefront again this month. I'll address it briefly now during my president's report and we'll have a little bit more discussion on it later, this meeting when accreditation is on our agenda. The faculty and staff at NIC are doing their part and, and that, that came through loud and clear when we met with the NWCCU. And in the report that they sent here. The administration has been working on some of the recommendations that were made. Trustee McKenzie and I are in Philadelphia right now going to an ACCT governance training. I did reach out to the other community colleges, they do not have any interest right now in joining us for doing governance training as was requested last month. The. Institution had six finalists for three dean positions on campus in the last month and I know Dr. Silves and Karen are. Getting from Angela at the Poly Group, the references and all the survey and all the feedback from the forums and. All the different groups that got to participate to, to make decisions and hopefully those will be announced. Next week during spring break or shortly after. And we are still holding on, beginning the VP searches until a permanent president is selected. On, on issues other than accreditation, there's a lot of positive things going around in the NIC community that I wanted to touch on tonight. Athletically, the winter sports season. Came to an end recently. Wrestling had six All Americans this year, very proud of them and the work that those guys did. Randy Boswell, our athletic trainer for twenty nine years. Also went into the NJCA Wrestling Hall of Fame officially this year after it was postponed last year for COVID. Our softball team has started their spring season and they're on a little bit of a winning streak, winning their last six games and they're four and O in the East Region right now. So this Friday and Saturday, they head out to Walla Walla. To. Keep that winning streak going. Our men's basketball team finished twenty and seven this year, fourteen and two in the conference and four men's basketball players were deemed all region players this week. Our women's basketball team also had a successful season and bowed out on Saturday in the first round of the NWAAC championships. Other great things going on with campuses is the work of the foundation. Bon Appetit was a successful event last Friday, I want to congratulate and thank the North Idaho College Foundation on their. Successful tenth annual Bon Appetit fundraising event, my wife and I had a blast there. And it was good to get away from our kids for a little bit and, and see the support that is out there for NIC. Proceeds of this event support educational excellence and student success at NIC. And I just want to thank the participants who invested so generously to make a difference in students' lives. We've also this week gotten more good news from the legislature. On last Friday, our community college budget went through the Senate thirty three zero and we get, we've continued to have strong support for North Idaho College. And the other community colleges by our state legislature, so I'm thankful for that. Along with them fully funding CEC this year at five percent for all of our employees, the. Department of Public Works budgets were passed, which includes a two point eight million dollar remodel of Headland. And a little over five hundred thousand dollars for. Aviation aerospace training lab over at the Parker Education Center. Our line item for occupancy costs was approved, which. Includes half of the D R M building and for the expansion of the Meyer Health and Science Building. And I, I would like to thank. The work that Laura and Sarah did connecting with our legislators, making sure that we, we got everything we needed, even at the last second, I know. Paul Amador, who was a legislator from North Idaho or from Coeur d'Alene, reached out to Laura and. Made sure that our needs were met and that we got the. Line items that we needed and the, the support we needed for next year, and so I'm thankful for all of the North Idaho legislators and their support of NIC. On that, I, I'm going to. Stand to see if there's any questions from the, the board, thank you.
All right, board, are there any questions? Chair. Trustee Howard.
President Savali. The applications for the dean positions that are still outstanding, were there three of them?
There were, there were three dean positions that we had posted, the dean of general studies. And those, the dean of enrollment services and the dean of career and technical education, those were the three that were posted. And all three of them had finalists on campus. In the last two to three weeks.
And it's my understanding that all of the external applicants have withdrawn, is that correct?
That is not correct. There was one external candidate that withdrew from general studies and one external candidate that withdrew from. I'm sorry. Enrollment services, we had two external finalists for career and technical education and we had one that remained for general studies.
External candidates?
Yes.
We have external candidates still on the, still on the list.
I, I believe that is correct, Cassie. Dr. Silves.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Dr. Savali, I was going to. Maybe say something later under remarks to go to the order, but maybe now is the time to do it. I also understand, we had a recent competition, I don't know if anybody can speak to that with our folks out at. The Skills USA, we had. Prep students. High school students. And we had a number of NIC Foundation scholarships that were awarded for that, is there, do we have anybody can speak to that at all? I have the newspaper article, I thought. That was something that should be noted, it sounds like it was a tremendously. Successful program.
Are you, are you referring to the collision repair one?
Well, it looks to me, it says we had high school students and college students from Spokane, Coeur d'Alene and Lewis and compete in auto collision repair competition hosted by North Idaho Colleges Parker. Technical Education Center on March fourth. And apparently we had some folks from Spokane come over because it's, doesn't work for them to try to do their competition within the Washington State area. Anyway.
I, I know, I know Laura's team worked hard on that article, that's a, that is some of the earned media that Laura's team has been working very hard on, Laura, do you have? Any information on that?
And if not, that's okay, I just want to make sure, if, if you missed it, it was in the Saturday, March nineteenth, Coeur d'Alene Press. It's on the. Pages C one and C three, there's quite a bit of information there, it sounds like it was a. Well-run competition and a lot of sponsored by local and regional companies in, in the, in the industry and the substantial list of those folks and. Sounds like it was a tremendous success, so. Just wanted to highlight that, another thing that's going on here at the college and, and things that are going on with the skill sets that we're teaching people to, as Bob talked about, to try to get them jobs. And jobs that pay a decent wage. So. I think that's probably it on that. Okay, next on the agenda, unless there's any other questions for Dr. Savali, do you have anything else? Okay. Trustee McKenzie, you had, had something you wanted to say earlier or asked, did we get past that or do you still have, when Mr. Carr was coming up to speak?
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second? Second. I have a second, is there any comment or discussion? And questions?
No comment and discussion on a consent agenda, Chair.
That is correct, my mistake. All right, all in favor of approving the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye. All right, the consent agenda motion passes, thank you. Next on the list is new business for the trustees and your board book, that's tab four. Karen Hubbard. I believe will be. The first reading for the revised filling of new and vacant positions, policy three point zero two point zero three. Karen, I think you're the next four, so we'll just have you take them as you're ready.
Thank you, good evening, Chair Banducci and trustees. As part of our ongoing review of employment related policies, I'm presenting four policies as you stated tonight for a first reading. Two with updates and two for elimination. All have been reviewed by the HR team, president's cabinet and gone through two readings at the Senate before being approved to bring forward to you. On each tab, I provided in your materials. Under the heading labeled discussion. You'll see a description of the primary changes in each one of these policies. So the first policy is three dot O two dot O three on filling of new and vacant positions and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to stand for those.
Yeah, we're actually going to end up removing or eliminating two policies, correct, through this process?
That's correct, yes.
We're giving everybody a moment to look at that under tab four, are there any questions or comments for Karen?
Not on this, yeah, I, I have some on the others, but not on this.
I saw you scrolling, so I want to make sure, so, Ken, anything from you, Greg? Okay, why don't we move on to the next one, Karen?
This one, three dot O two dot O two establishment of new positions. Again, you'll see the, the high points, if you will, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kristi.
Karen, I just had some questions under two areas, one's the permanent positions. My question is, there's verbiage in there that speaks to permanent positions that was. Previous language, still current policy, speaks to permit positions being included in the NIC salary base. I just want to know, has that been moved to procedure, if it has, then I don't have any concerns, but if that sentence hasn't been moved to the permanent policy proposal. I would want that in there so that it's very clear that no permanent positions beside the president are being paid outside the approved salary schedule.
Kristy, what are you referring to, just?
Yeah, it's a three point O two. And if you go to.
On the first page or the second page?
The first page, page one or two.
Okay.
Permanent positions.
No, I'm with you there, there's a one, there's an A, B and a C. Where are you looking?
Well, if you, if you go down a little farther, you're going to see some language that has, is being removed and it speaks to. The employees. Still being on the NIC salary base, I just want to make sure that we retain that language.
Oh, I see, you're looking at it, it's the one, two, three on page two, it's, okay. It's number one, the, the permanent positions are those included in permanent salary base, thank you, I got you.
So I don't, Karen, is that in procedure?
That speaks to the budget, I, I think you're saying, is that the concern that those?
We wouldn't want any positions outside of the, the salary schedule. Is what, and so this policy, if it were passed like this, it would allow for that.
I believe that's, I'm hoping you were all provided copies of the procedure that goes along with it. I believe that that would, would be addressed in the procedure. Okay, it looks, looks a little bit different.
All right, but I'll, I'll look forward again, okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Chair, continuing on in that policy, unless you wanted to.
Well, actually, I was gonna say, I have the procedures, so while you're continuing, I will look to see if I can note what you were asking.
Okay, and then Karen, under the temporary positions, the first sentence. Is a temporary position is one that is benefit eligible and is established for a finite period. But then if you go into procedures that define a finite period, it's very loose, it's usual, the term usually is three years used and so I, I'm not very comfortable with that. I, I think probably current policy does give the president, college president, the ability to create a new position, a temporary position. Without coming to the board, without it being a budget approved position, I don't want to eliminate that flexibility, but I do want. A timeframe on it, a more specific timeframe, because if you read on in the procedures. It does give the college president, and we're not speaking about Dr. Savali, we're, we're talking about presidents from here on out. The ability to create a new position without. Well, to extend a new position without having to ever come before the board and having us consider it in our budget. And I, I think, you know, we clearly have the fiduciary responsibility of the college, we have to approve those positions, so. It feels like it really removes board oversight to not have a definite timeframe, how long we could have a temporary position.
Trustee Wood, in the draft. That you've received, including the accompanying procedure, that definition is included at the end of the second page on, of the procedure. I don't know if you see that there, but under temporary positions in the procedure. The end of page two, it says a temporary position is usually established for a period of three years or less.
So that was the, the key, it says usually, it's just too loose and so I'd like to see that. More narrowly defined so that the board, we shouldn't be approving any positions that could go on and on and on. Not opposed to the president creating a new position, it's just the board needs to have oversight on the length of those positions.
Understood, trustee would, would, would and up to. Three years, is, is there something that you had in mind specifically?
Well, this, this would be, you know, the will of the board, personally. Well, this, this would be, you know, the will of the board. Personally, I would like to see only a one-year temporary position. And then if we're, if the board wants to incorporate that into their budget, it would become a permanent position. But that would be the will of the full board.
I would say right now, I think. Is it, Trustee McKenzie?
Yes, sorry. I have some connectivity drop-off issues. I caught, I think most of what Trustee Wood was saying. And I, I actually have in my notes too, that I would like to have the number of years in, in the policy and, and then up to three years, which is what we have right now. I would like that to be in the policy. And then you can even add wording with approval of temporary positions to go beyond with board approval, if you want. But yeah, and I think that would be good. And I have one more topic on the first page when we're done with this conversation.
Okay, I'll come right back to you then, because I think right now we've got people that have been on temporary positions for longer than a year. So that, that might be kind of interesting if we limited it to a year or three, might be reasonable. Karen, to Trustee Woods' question, as I look at the procedure, the closest I can come to maybe codifying that is, is on page two after number four, it says permanent positions that are not funded through the general fund must be documented and evaluated by human resources prior to the position being posted for recruitment. But I'm not sure that even answers the question exactly. But I don't know that, I don't know that Kristy's question is answered. I may be missing it. So maybe that's something we have to take a look at.
If I may, Chair Banducci.
Yeah, go ahead. Greg, you're, you're up next, sir.
As I caught first half of Trustee Woods' discussion and then my internet dropped, you'll have to forgive me. But the, I, I think, I think her concern is addressed in, in this new wording. And it would be even better addressed if the words like informed consent was added for the positions. So like the establishment of a permanent position that is fully funded by the general fund must be approved by the Board of Trustees with, you know, informed consent before the position is filled. And yeah, just that way, the, the Board of Trustees can you know, it, it gives flexibility, because like what is informed consent? It gives flexibility on, on how important the position is. That it could be, you know, a summary with the asterisks that, you know, three new positions and cardinal, a center was added, or it could be, you know, a full-page informed consent. This is what the new permanent position will do. I'll leave that up to the president to do his best to communicate. But I think, I think that's what authorization of permanent positions is trying to address. And I think that would help Trustee Woods. Valid. Over.
Thank you. I, I think since the internet dropped for you, Trustee McKenzie, you, you missed, we, we got past the permanent position and that is approved by the board. What I was concerned about was the temporary position in that it could go on if we don't define what the finite period of time is. It could go on even beyond three years, about ever being approved by the board or not being taken into consideration of our overall budget. So I would like temporary positions to have a, a defined time period before they have to come back to the board for approval.
Yeah, I was in agreement with that. And I, I was, I liked Karen Hubbard's proposal of up to three years period in, in the policy versus the procedure.
Okay, so you were, you were referring to the temporary positions then, okay.
Yes, the informed consent is on the first page for the permanent positions and the up to three years is for the temporary positions on the second page.
Thank you for that clarification. Karen, your jotting notes, do you have any questions of Trustee Wood or Trustee McKenzie on their input? There's, there's one spot where they don't align. Kristy was talking about one year and Greg was comfortable with the three-year, but making it up to, as you had maybe suggested.
I'm, I'm following along and taking notes.
No, I, I know. And that's the one point of, that it didn't all come exactly aligned. Was there anything else?
Chair Banducci.
Dr. Sivoli.
I, I really am indifferent to how long we limit a temporary position. But I, I would, I would like that if we are going to do this, that it, it's moving forward. Because I know on campus, in different temporary positions, promises were made. And there are some that are past a year already. And I would like to honor that so that we don't have any faculty or staff that are maybe in a temporary position feeling some angst tonight.
That was to my point. Well, I said, I think we've already exceeded the year for some folks, so. Trustee McKenzie.
I, I believe up, and up to three years period in the temporary position wording with maybe a, a goal, a finite goal period may be a good compromise, something that for the president's cabinet to chew on, maybe for the next proposal.
Mr. Chair, I can certainly be flexible and do the up to three years. I would just want the board to be aware of temporary positions when we're, when we're working on our budget process. So I can be flexible with that language.
And as Trustee McKenzie said, if the president's cabinet wants to revisit that or give us additional guidance through, with their wisdom of what would, would be best, you know, they would, they would know better than we would. So, all right, all right. So that's 3.02.02. I think we're okay to move on from that at this time. Next one's 3.02.04, tab six.
And these last two are the two proposed for elimination, because the content has either been incorporated into other policies or is no longer relevant. The first of those is filling of vacant positions without benefits, 3.02.04. And that has been incorporated into the previous policy that we just reviewed.
Questions or comments? Karen, let's go ahead and log the next one, please.
And finally, we have policy 3.02.06, probation, promotion, demotion, transfer of classified employees. And the same is true for this one in terms of the, the currently relevant content having been absorbed in other policies. And, and much of it is no longer relevant in this, in this policy, in this case.
Any comments or questions on that one? Okay, I'm not hearing any. That's the last one. Thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
All right, the next agenda item is board leadership, and that is Trustee Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I said earlier, I don't intend to make a motion tonight. I have, the board has voted twice already on the chairmanship. We don't have a full board, makes it difficult to get any votes really done, really on, on a lot of things. You know, I've, I've made many statements in the past about the leadership, the, the issues that we're facing with accreditation, with now very clearly with the low morale on campus. But it's not meant to be a focus entirely on Trustee Banducci. What I'd like to come back to is what we were asked to do by the NWCCU about a year ago. And that was to address our board leadership. And we, we didn't. I mean, I guess technically you could say that we took another vote, but we didn't change anything. And we knew that we should. We should shuffle these positions around. All the trustees are capable of serving in the board chair role. And sometimes it's just time to move on and somebody else steps into the role. Both Trustee Howard and I have moved on several times when we've been chair. So even though I'm not going to call for another motion tonight, because I, I just think it will be divisive and not really accomplish anything, it's still a real concern. We still have to address the NWCCU even more now. And I think they're probably going to be very strong, have been strong in their letter of findings about our leadership. So we're going to have to come to some agreement. We're going to have to have another trustee step into the role. Again, I won't make a formal motion, but it's time for the four of us to work together, hopefully a fifth trustee soon, and, and fill the role and move on. Thank you.
Speaking of leadership positions.
Chair, if I may.
Trustee McKenzie. Go ahead.
I just, Chair Banducci, Trustee Wood, in, in response, I just want to thank you for making it clear that it is all about just gaining control of this board. And this board governance is about acknowledging elections and that they have been spoken. And what the constituent reports, I want to say, is, is very real. Let me double take on that. What the constituent reports are communicating is real. But what I feel is their focus is misplaced. This boiling point has been brewing for several years and is documented in N I C documents dating back from 2018, and I'm sure even before, if I can find them, that have been buried, but not buried enough for brave individuals to have provided them to. What we are hearing is very similar to what these documents have presented years prior to the 2020 election. And the solution then was the 2020 election, which was the sentiment provided in those documents of voting them out, the existing board at the time. The Board of Trustees' major responsibility is to set policy and provide accountability that those N I C documents expect of this board that they were lacking in fulfilling. Policy has not changed significantly, but accountability has greatly changed due to these elections.
Yes, you're referring to the survey that was conducted and the survey results that came out of that that was published in 2018. I, I, I've seen that. I actually have a copy of that document also. And it does read sort of like what you think you were reading today. Ironically, the, the discourse, the contempt of the leadership, the distrust of the P C, the there was, well, like I said, you could have put 2022 on it, and you would have not known you were reading it from 2018. Very interesting. Maybe that's a document that we could even make public if someone wanted to just have a reference. And that was prior leadership.
I've been working on a document and I've, I've extracted highlights of it. If you want me to read, I'm prepared to read some.
No, I don't think that's necessary tonight. I think we just, we'll make people aware of it at this time and we can follow up on it. Do you have anything else, Trustee McKenzie?
No, it's time.
Okay, Trustee Wood, I, I had meant to ask you earlier, I had not, because we do have some different roles. One of the roles that you had taken on was to be the liaison for the K-Tech. Have you had an opportunity to have a meeting or, or anything with them? We've not had you on the agenda yet for a report.
No, we don't have a meeting until, Dr. Sivoli, it's mid-April, isn't it? Yeah.
I believe that's correct, Trustee Wood.
I didn't want to be neglectful of that, but I hadn't heard anything, but I wanted to at least circle around and I had meant to ask you and I had not yet. Next on the agenda for information items is an accreditation update. Dr. Sivoli.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to stay very factual here, and I'm not going to speculate on how the process and what the end process may be or what the decision will be. March 2nd, we received the final peer panel report. And I'd like to thank Dr. Kurtz and all of P C for their work on our institution's response to the peer panel report. Alex Harris was also brought in to help Karen with the infectious disease policy response, to share the work of our rebounds team and the comprehensive work that they did during the pandemic. And I would be amiss to not have a huge thanks to Shannon, who was instrumental in linking all of the evidence that everybody provided as well for the document. We came down to the wire on getting that submitted. We submitted it March 12th, our institutional response to the NWCCU, and recently have released the response to the larger college community after it became clear that it may take longer than 10 days for the NWCCU to respond to us. On March 15th, we presented to the Executive Committee of the NWCCU for approximately 45 minutes and stood for questions. Dr. Kurtz, Sarah Garcia, Dr. Silvis, Laura Rumppler, and Ken Wardinsky joined me in representing N I C along with State Board of Education guests that we invited in, including Matt Freeman, the State Board Executive Director, and T J Bliss, the Chief Academic Officer. They were invited in as guests and the NWCCU approved their, their attendance. Initially, our, our leadership team, along with in consultation with our deans, held the response from the community and, in hopes that if we got the letter of action in a timely manner from the NWCCU, our employees could experience one news cycle instead of two or three. And I know that the deans are very empathetic to what their faculty and staff are going through. And I appreciated that. They called Dr. Kurtz and I in and, and asked us to hold that. And then when we got more information, that it may take us longer to get a response from the NWCCU. Doctors Kurtz and I met with Dr. Silvis and then again talked with the deans. And it was decided that if that was the case, then we should release it. It is, it's not my place or the college's place to speculate on what the NWCC will do next. But I, I appreciate the partnership and the support they are giving us through this difficult time, as well as the State Board of Education. They've been, they've been valuable external partners and sounding boards for, for me as we navigate this and Dr. Kurtz as we, as we continue to provide them information that they ask for and giving them the time and space to continue their work. When we receive the letter of action, we will, we will release it. What I can say is that college leadership appreciates the time we were afforded with the NWCCU and their desire to work with us and put the needs of our students first. They, they loud and clear said they understand that our faculty and staff are, are doing a great job supporting the institutional mission. Accreditation and all of this news is having some effects. If we do get a sanction, sometimes up to 10% of your enrollment is lost as a result of that. And with the publicity that we are getting, we may start seeing that this fall. There are inroads being made by U of I in post-falls and, and the Corlaine School District. And guidance counselors are recommending other places to those students. I have talked with Sarah, and to give you an idea, a 1% drop in enrollment is about $100,000 approximately in tuition revenue. And so I open up the discussion and on accreditation and the Stanford questions that maybe you guys have.
All right, any questions for Dr. Sivoli? Trustee Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, it's more really to the board and maybe Mr. Lyons. I think there's a real misunderstanding about what we agreed to a few months ago when we would, we agreed to meet. I'm, I asked for it on the agenda, so I remember that meeting, that we would, we would agree to set aside some time after we received the findings to go over it as a board and discuss a possible response. Now, I'm hearing tonight that Now I'm hearing tonight that the chair said that we were only going to do that after the, after the letter of action was received. That seems too late, frankly. And so if there's a way for us, the four of us to sit down before the letter of action and work on a solid response to the NWCCU from the board, that seems to make the most sense. I don't understand why we would wait for the letter of action and then make a response. So I guess I would ask the board to consider that we meet as soon as possible and go over the the letter of finding and see if there's areas that we can agree that we need to change, alter quickly and do what we can to comply. Does anybody want to do that?
Chrissy, I believe that's what the accreditation, man, that word is a challenge to say. The folks working on that, I believe that's what they did. We provided the response and they went through it, if I understood it, point by point. And addressed each of the items in that letter of finding and have made the response both in writing and then verbally. Because they spoke with the commission. So again, I think that's been done. So I'm not sure what we would do with anything that we do now until we get the letter of action. We're, we're at a point now, we're in a waiting game, if I understand the process and the timing of it, we're waiting to hear back from the NWCCU. Dr. Sivoli, am I, am I missing a step there anywhere?
I, I, I think there's things we obviously can do. For example, finding ways to work together better and making sure that we continue to respect and listen to the public and our constituent groups as well as make sure we continue to afford follow policies and procedures and affirm that we agree to them.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
In the response from the internal accreditation team, there was, I think, at least five points under board governance that they were not able to address. That would come to us. And so they're just left vacant. So that's why I'm suggesting that the board come together, do our best to address address the findings. Again, if we wait until the letter of action, what's the point? The action is the action.
Chair Banducci.
Trustee McKenzie.
We've hired a very qualified president and his accreditation executive team. I think we should look to them just like we've done to handle the institutional response and take input from our president and the executive committee. So I think they've heard this board discussion and they can work what is best for this institution. I think it is clear this board has personal relationships that can only go up. And I hope with statements today that other trustees are going to actually start taking my phone calls. So looking forward to collaborating with each of you. And let's focus on the students and do what this community needs moving forward. I would appreciate even a concurrence of that desire and support of our executive accreditation committee. Over.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
I certainly support the team and and the work that they've tried to do, but my point is that the the governance issues that were raised are directed at the board. It's very difficult for the team to respond. The board has to respond. They can't respond for us, as hard as they tried, and I know they did. So it's really going to come down to this board working together and coming up with a proper response.
Chair, if I may.
Trustee McKenzie.
I feel like trustee Wood has tried to weaponize accreditation from the very beginning. And even before this board got elected. And there is newspaper articles that my wife even had to respond to. They felt compelled to respond to. So I have full confidence in the team at NIC and I look forward to working with other board members. So if Christie, trustee Wood is willing to make a motion and have at it and vote, but let's go to bed.
We're not quite done yet, Mr. Chair. Not quite done yet.
Well, it's very late for me.
I know, it's getting there.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
My comments earlier, I guess I'll repeat them. I don't think we can delegate the dysfunction of this board, correction of that to the administration. It's our responsibility. And we haven't done anything to address that. We need to. I'm not sure how we can do that, but we need to do that and not try and place it on the shoulders of the administration to correct our deficiencies. The deficiencies were outlined in the report from the accreditation people. And quite frankly, they've been outlined in the letters of of no confidence from the faculty and staff. And I find it puzzling that we would even suggest that we can correct our problems by delegating it to somebody else. So I think we need to show her the responsibility, get together and try and correct our problems without, quite frankly, the intervention of anybody else.
You know, that's, that's all well and fine, and especially if you like what's written or you support it, which you have stated publicly on several occasions. And I've even heard trustees up here advocate their fiduciary responsibility and their concern for the college by saying we need to be put on probation, we need to be suspended, we need to be this. Oh, my gosh, I must like a military saying we might as well shoot ourselves. I, I don't understand the mindset there at all. And, you know, thank you, you know, God bless Tony Stewart for writing that and for the NWCCU to adopt it and put their name on it and for all the things that have been written that I'm sure you are pleased with and trustee Wood are pleased with. But you know what? I'm going to wait for their letter of action and then I guess we'll decide what we actually need to do. And we'll address that as appropriate, because that's the, that's going to tell us what our course of action needs to be at that time and how we need to respond. So this whole crisis that has been manufactured from two and a half years ago and here we still are. You know, some of you are trying to get, I guess, what you, what you want, but it's a strange way to go about it. And I've said that before. I've never, I've never heard of hurting yourself to win.
Chair Banducci.
Trustee McKenzie.
I guess to build a shred of credibility on the other side of this table is I would like to hear the other trustees acknowledge that you are chair of this board, because I have directly asked another trustee of trustee Wood to let you be chair during meetings and she's flat out said no. So to initiate our governance improvement process, I would like to at least hear that acknowledgement.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to acknowledge that you're the chair, but I'm also acknowledge that I think you should resign.
Well, you've made that abundantly clear. I'm sure we have a mutual respect for one another at this time. So be that as it may, we are.
Just let it be noted that there's crickets.
Oh, no, I, well, I generally don't like to respond to trustee McKenzie because it's always adversary, but I agree with trustee Howard.
Of course you do. Nothing less expected. And there we are. So here's the, here's the challenge of that. If, if you disagree, it's for the cause and it's all good, or Ken disagrees, but if I disagree or Greg disagrees, we're, we're wrong or we're villains or we're extremists or we, you know, we can be denigrated and disrespected. I don't understand how that can be because there's four people, which could have four opinions. So if these two disagree, it's okay. If these two disagree, there's something wrong with them or dysfunctional, we're, we're whatever. It's a very interesting dichotomy and a real hypocrisy about that. So I, I just point that out. I, I don't want to say that you're wrong because you disagree with me, but in the same vein, don't, don't say that I'm wrong because I disagree with you. And I'm not bad.
Mr. Chair, what I would say is that there is an independent report.
Trustee McKenzie.
Chair Banducci, what I see the problem here is, is the acceptance of opposing viewpoints being accepted on this campus. If the community here at NIC remains unwilling to foster an environment where imposing viewpoints are respected, then that's on the electorate to fix the toxic environment and I am confident a solution will present itself. The community is aware of board problems and I believe aims to resolve this problem in November. No wonder accreditation has NIC under a microscope because academic freedom demands opposing viewpoints being accepted and presented.
Well, it's interesting because you mentioned that about the community. It appears that people through this process have done a very fine job of splitting the community. And, and to, and to your point, I guess we will have the community's voice. Ironically, some have tried to take that voice away from the community through some legislation, through some backdoor work with the State Board of Education. Some legislation that was tried to be put through the House, run through the State Affairs Committee with community colleges not knowing about it. College of Eastern Idaho found out about it. College of Southern Idaho found out about it. Opposed it, their, their legislators opposed it. North Idaho legislators, I can count for all of them for the House, except for Rep. Amador, got behind it. And Mr. Chaney, who was carrying that legislation on NAPA, ended up making several amendments. Now, after making the amendments and making it so that the other community colleges thought it was okay, remembering that none of them had been contacted before this, it's the legislation that impacted them, which was going to change the vote, how the votes went, whether it was zones or the entire county, appointments by the SBOE of trustees, if there were resignations or if we fell below a quorum. Very, very significant items regarding operations of a community college that would have taken it out of the hands of voters did get through the House, 62 to eight. But then instead of going through the, because it should have probably been through the House Education Committee, but they took it to the House State Affairs. Then they bring it to the Senate, instead of staying and doing it through the Senate State Affairs, then they brought it back to the Senate Education, which, there's a gentleman in there, Senator Woodward, and there's others, and Senator Getty's been working behind the scenes, making calls and writing letters. And the first time I meet Senator Woodward is when we're down there and we get done briefing the Senate Education Committee. No, sir. Well, they're on a committee and they put it in the drawer. So they killed the, they killed the legislation. They didn't get it. Hey, it's my turn. We all get a turn. Okay, would you please escort her out if she's going to have to help us, please? This is not, this is not crowd participation. You, Sharon, you should know better. You've done this multiple times.
You cannot.
You embarrass yourself. You do not speak out.
Please continue, Dad.
So my point is, so there's a lot of things going on, legislation just being one example. Right to these very things about leadership accreditation, this is all part of a large mosaic of the things that have been going on from those that see the potential loss of power, they see a certain timeline, and this is the way they go. It's not about ideas, it's not debating ideas, it's not about academic fairness, it's not about what is the vote for policies. It's not about what are we doing for programs or athletics or building a building. It's no, we have to go to the national level. We have to do cancel politics. We do, you know, politics of personal destruction. It's just, it's amazing the things that are being done. And North Idaho isn't like that. People don't cotton to negative campaigning. We don't have cancel culture. We don't character assassinate. That, that's what this has become. And that's it. That's because there's no ideas to debate. Facts. And it's very unfortunate, but here we are. And this is what's devolved down to this.
Mr. Chair, in all of that discussion, you've left out that there was an independent peer review panel by our accreditation commission that validated all the complaints. And we are now on the verge of maybe being put on probation or we could lose accreditation. So to sit there and suggest that you've been unfairly maligned, that you're the victim.
Did I say me?
An independent panel is telling us we have to make changes. It can't be a personal, you have to get on board with, with the board, follow policy, follow procedure, follow law. That is what the peer review panel is telling us.
Okay, well, thank you, trustee Wood. Okay, um, is there anything else on accreditation, President Sivoli?
I have nothing else.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the presidential search update. Trustee Howard.
Chairman Banducci and I have co-chaired an effort to move the search process along. It has been arduous. It has been long. We have finally formulated a community search committee comprised of 27 individuals, which includes Chairman Banducci and I. We have the first meeting of that committee has been set twice. It's now set for April 5th. During that meeting, it'll be an orientation meeting for the counselor, for the committee members. The search coordinator will acquaint the committee members of the process and the application evaluation process, the interview questions, determine future meetings and interview dates. And that is hopefully going to take place then on the, on the 5th. We have published the invitations to submit applications and they are presently being received. They will be received until April 18th, at which time they will be presented and sometimes even a little bit before that to the committee for review. The, the committee will then have interviews with the applicant pool and will also go through and reduce the total number of applications down to a a level to be determined by them as to how many semifinalists they want to interview. And then we will proceed after that with the evaluation by the committee of those final applicants. That's my report.
Any comments or questions? All right. I don't hear any. Board chair report. I've not used this really the last couple of months, but I'm going to use it today. And I would appreciate not being interrupted. I'm going to clarify a couple of things. First off, there's a lot of fiction out there. It's a little tiresome. I have no vendetta against this college. It's nonsense. Well, believe what you want, but I have nothing against NIC at all. If anything, I just want it to be successful. Granted, there are some individuals that have been on the board with me that I didn't care for a lot, and there certainly been some folks at NIC here, faculty and staff and senior leadership that I haven't had the strongest love for either, but that's just how it goes. Not everybody likes each other a ton. And some of those folks have have moved on. But know that I do not want NIC to not be successful. I have no vendetta. So that's unfortunate, no issue with the college. I, I have family and friends that have attended and graduated, including my own brother and my daughter-in-law, who is an enrolled student from the Charter Academy. Very bright. The, a couple of other things. I mentioned this earlier, we're in North Idaho. I was raised here. I'm from here. I came back here. We're the type of people, when we see someone sliding the ditch in the snow, we figure out a safe place to park as quick as we can. We jump out and try to push our neighbor back out of the snowbank. That's how we do it. But we don't do this cancel culture and this politics of personal destruction and character assassination. And quite frankly, if you, if you, if you, if you partake of that, all you're doing is diminishing yourself. So I would just hope you reconsider if that's the game where you're at. As far as my supposed interference in academics, I've never audited a class. I've never reviewed a curriculum or a syllabus. I'd like to see the statements that are attributed to me that I supposedly somehow threatened academics. I have my degrees also and as far as I'm concerned, you do what you do in your class. I don't believe we've impacted the delivery of instruction. If you have some feeling or some belief or you think something, that's on you because it hasn't come from me. Because I haven't told you how to teach your class. I don't know how you're teaching your class. I don't have time for that. I think some of you spend way more time must think that I think more about this college than you realize. I have a job, a life, a family, wife, children, grandchildren, full-time job, and I'm serving in the military over at Fairchild. And I've just got a bunch of days scheduled here in March and April because we've got a lot of things going in the world in case you didn't notice. People that are really doing important things, not soap opera here every day. People are dying right. People that are really doing important things, not soap opera here every day. People are dying right now. Little perspective. I just lost my dear friend Jim Hightower on Sunday, you know, it's there's real things going on and we're wrapped up around some pretty petty stuff. Well, it is real. It is, but on the keep in perspective, that's all. And I don't want you to lose your job. I don't want accreditation to go away. I don't at all. But the fact that we very nicely, I think, planned and split the community and created this, you know, that's the choice. You know, none of us are villains, at least I hope we're not, but anyway, I ran I ran for reelection the first time in 2016. I never talked about my opponent. I didn't criticize him. I I didn't speak about him. I focused on what I was doing and stayed positive. And you also can go out and look, you don't see me on Facebook denigrating anybody. You don't see me writing letters to the editor, my turns or online. I'd like to recommend that for everybody. It's a common courtesy not to disparage one another. Maybe we don't have to say everything that comes into our brain at that minute. If you type something, maybe leave it there, look at it three or four times, let it sit for 24 or 48 hours. Take a breath, have your spouse look at it. Maybe they go, oh, honey, maybe you shouldn't send that. Just little discretion. The whole point is we've been talking a lot about relationships here and about how to do things and how we can be more courteous and non and less dysfunctional and how we all want to kumbaya and work together. I'm just giving you some thoughts of how we can do that. But if you're attacking me and then asking me to support you, but you've never supported me, even though I've talked about raises for the teachers and I always try to include the adjunct in the part-time and I'll speak to you and I'll tell you, I even talked about the reset and I'd like you guys, you know. But it's got to go both ways. I've been on the board nine and a half years now. Don't think I felt a whole lot of love from some of you out here. Now, surprisingly, I actually have a lot of supporters, but most of them are anonymous or they reach out to me in other ways. But a lot more than most people would think, but they're very quiet because it could be dangerous for them, I think, at least that's how they feel. So and I'll say one last thing. In June is the 40, well, two last thing. June will be the 41st year anniversary of me putting the uniform on. I went in the military at 17. I'm an officer and a gentleman. I graduated from the Air Force Academy. One thing through this first eight years of this, no one ever impugned my integrity or thought I was a liar. You know, I was under the onicote, I'm not lie, cheat or steal or tolerate among us, anyone who does. Suddenly, it's been an attack on me and my character. I can't even tell you, at least in the the women in my circle and everybody knows me and the things I've been accused of. I'm a sheepdog. I don't hurt or threaten women or children. I protect. If I saw you and I didn't know you and you were in danger, I would run to your help, even at the peril of my own risk of my own safety or my own life. That's how I'm built. So there's been a lot of allegations and things and half truths and mistruths and either people can't hear or they don't remember, or there's a lot of fabrication going on to for some agendas and some narratives and I'm tired of that. And I'm not, I can't just be standing three feet from you and just be scaring you. That doesn't work either. That gives me no place to move. And this recent incident this week, I did nothing wrong. In fact, I was not the aggressor and was very polite. If you see the things, I mean, but yet it got made out and then it was a police reporter's like, my gosh, there's security camera tapes and eyewitness that dispelled, you know, the nonsense. I wish it was witnesses and tapes everywhere and that would be very helpful. So I I try to be pleasant, I try to be, I'll compliment, I'll try to, you know. If I'm awkward, I apologize. I certainly don't mean to ever offend anybody. That's not my intention, certainly not the the campus faculty or staff. So I I guess if everybody wants us to be able to work together and do this, I think it takes, it's going to take all of us. And it's got to be both ways, two-way street here. And you may not shake your head, that's fine, Teresa, that's fine. You know, that's your choice. That's okay.
Don't call out people by name.
I'm sorry. Yeah, just hardship and smiling at me and it's kind of weird. The other thing is, I do not intend to resign. So either we can all start working together and move forward positively for the sake of the college or I guess we continue this public food fight and that's unfortunate too, but I'm not resigning. You guys went nuclear on me right out the door. In fact, some people aren't too happy about that. I know there's been some feedback even from the foundation that 14 months ago, instead of just coming and talking or having some conversation, maybe even 16 months ago, this thing went from here to here and you got to resign. Well, that's not very persuasive argument. It's, you know, there's a certain escalation of hostility. It went here, so we fired the nuclear weapon right off the bat. Silos are empty. So you've done everything about you can to me other than call me an ax murderer and that I beat baby seals with clubs. So I I'm here for the duration, so you know, I'm a military guy, I've been all over the world, I guess, here we go. I'm not stepping down, I'm not resigning. I won't leave Greg alone with the other two trustees and have him get run over. So let's either work together and try to do the best we can going forward because just coming after me like this is is non-productive and it's not helping anybody. And again, I think for some of you all are diminishing yourselves and you can do better. Higher road. That's my board chair report. I'm done. Remarks for the good of the order.
Mr. Chair.
Trusty Wood, do you have something positive to share with us?
I have something to share, something to share.
I'm sure you do, always.
Or agenda topic, this isn't the time for.
I don't need to be in a, you're the chair, you need to control the meeting.
Well, do you have something that pertains to remarks for the good of the order?
Yes, thank you.
Remark for the good of the order.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
You know, we just sat and listened to your entire statement under the report of the board chair.
Because I've been the one, it's been the subject. Well, I'm I'm responding wide because.
I haven't even spoke yet.
Apparently, okay.
Okay. At no time, Mr. Chair, did you take any personal responsibility. At no time did you acknowledge that you manhandled a female employee.
I did not.
At no time did you acknowledge sexual harassment.
Chair Banducci, I feel like.
Now you're going out, this is now remarks for the good of the order.
Yeah, I did. What trustees.
Christie, this is your personal vendetta.
You do not control.
Publicly, all you want to do is get back at me and make me pay.
That's not true.
Yes, you have.
Todd, your your
Write a new narrative.
Your behavior is just awful.
Oh.
And you refuse to take any accountability. That's why we're in the shape we're in.
Neither do you and you never apologized. Yeah, but she's talking inappropriately. This is remarks for the good of the order. If this is remarks for the good of the order, then I can fly without an airplane.
My goodness.
Remarks for the good of the order.
You wonder why we don't want you to be chairman.
And you wonder why I didn't want to be under you for all those years and can, as I was silenced for eight years.
Todd, you were not silenced.
That is a lie.
This is against policy.
It's a lie.
So.
If you have an agenda item topic, you should have put it and said it during agenda items.
So I'm speaking.
This is disgusting.
And you really need to take control of the good of the order and let the trustees speak.
Well, I'll take control because you're out of line.
Okay.
This is inappropriate.
Todd.
Topic.
Todd.
Gavel it down, Chair, I suggested.
You're kidding me, right?
No, no.
So you and Greg are going to decide what trustees speak.
If you want to overrule the chair, Christie, you make a motion.
Todd.
Maintain order in the board meeting.
You wonder why we're in trouble here.
I can point right out why we're in trouble.
Is it the is it the is it the people who complain, Todd?
I can point right out why we're in trouble.
Is it the people who complain? It's never your fault. Todd.
I'm sure they wear capes too. Okay.
Todd, it's just awful.
I'd be happy to, sir, but I think we have.
I make a motion that we close the meeting.
I need a second.
Second.
Sir.